Given to the public by forwarding a copy of the notice to all requesting radio stations and the Kenosha News. Purpose of the special meeting is to review the agenda items for the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five regular board meeting. Would you please stand for the pledge?
Roll call. Ms. Adams. Mr. Bryan.
Here.
Mrs. Landry.
Here.
Mr. Tierney.
Here.
Ms. Stevens. Mr. Price.
Here.
Mrs. Madder.
Here.
Okay. Dr. Weiss.
All right, thank you. Uh, the first item we have is um old business on the upcoming agenda for August twenty-sixth. And this is um sharing some information that was requested by the board at the July uh board meeting, so. We've prepared uh this based on some of the um, some of the requests for information that we had. Um, and before I get into this, this did take um, it took some time to prepare it, and there's some nuances to the data. So I do, as I go through the presentation, I'll explain what those are. Yeah, and just to begin, I want to say that there's differences and similarities between uh the teacher pay scale and the AST uh compensation scales. Like the teacher pay scale, there is a pay scale for ASTs. Unlike the teacher pay scale, the levels are determined by the position. The teachers, if you think about the teacher pay scale, there is one pay scale. And thinking about the AST pay scale, there are multiple um positions with separate pay scales within there. So for example, directing principals are paid at a higher level than assistant principals and are on a different um row of that um pay scale. And it's possible to progress through the different levels of pay based on years in the position. And every year, uh, the school board has to approve movement on the pay scale, and this did occur back in June. For all employee groups, there was a um uh recommendation that was approved by the board to move everybody on their pay scale in order to honor the pay um, the pay scale process that was put in place years ago. So I just wanted to start with that bit of background. Additionally, I want to talk a little bit about what the Consumer Price Index is and why it's important for school districts. Um, since Act Ten in twenty-ten, twenty-eleven, uh, teacher unions and school boards across Wisconsin were limited to bargaining up to CPI from the peer- previous years. Uh, and what CPI really is, is it's an inflation. So the level of inflation um is what boards and teacher unions are, th- that's the bargaining. Boards can go over that, but it's not a subject of bargaining, that would be supplemental pay. So again, just some more background. Many districts across the state, including Kenosha Unified, have applied this settlement for all the employ- for all employee groups. Um, that's been the past practice. So just a little background on what CPI is and why it's important. It's so that basically inflation doesn't erode the spending power of employees. It's to keep up with the cost of living. The past couple of negotiations um have ended with increases less than full CPI. So a couple of years ago, CPI was around four percent, and we settled at two. I believe that was in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, last year, um CPI was eight percent, and we settled at four percent. So I was very excited uh when we're able to recommend full CPI for this uh coming year for all employee groups because it had been a couple of years since we've been able to do that. And that was based on the additional um funding that was made available in the state budget um that we had not planned on, the special education reimbursement. So board action on July twenty-second of this past of last month, uh, there was a delay in voting on the CPI increase for the AST group. It was tabled uh till this August meeting. Uh, and this basically affects, um, you can see here on the board. Let me see if I can shoot that far. I can't really do it well. It affects a hundred and forty-six employees, which is about six-point-four percent of all employees in the district. Unfortunately, and just to be very frank, this action has created um feelings of division and negatively impacted morale in the district. There's uh, that has been in one of the impacts of this. This slide shows um the budget impact of the propose- of the recommendation for added compensation overall for this year. So what we were looking at and what we um had recommended to the board in July was a seven-point-four million-dollar package of um increases for compensation for the entire district, for the roughly twenty-five-hundred employees. Out of that, just to break it down, two-point-two million went to, was to go to salary schedule movement that I mentioned earlier that was approved in June. The recommended base wage, the CPI increase, the two-point-nine-five percent for all staff was four-point-eight million. Uh, bringing back, um, and these were presented as, they had an impact um in increasing compensation, recommending adding back the Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve holidays for non-teachers. Ten-month was about a hundred and thirteen thousand, and then bringing, adding an additional hour for tier-three ESPs uh was an additional two-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand. The amount of the CPI increase for the AST group um is just under half-a-million dollars out of that seven-point-four million dollars. So that's, that's what is going to be appearing um on the August twenty-sixth board meeting. I wanted to give, uh, again, provide context for what portion we're talking about. So what was, what was tabled and what we're presenting tonight um is just that amount and that portion of this um recommendation. The agenda items, I did get a question about benefits um and what those benefits are. Again, this takes, we are working on that. This takes, it does take a long time, and as we start diving into this data, I'm gonna call out some of the nuances and inconsistencies that are in it. And it does take a long time to get the, the information that we have available was on the DPI website to provide context for some of these other discussions, it's, it just takes more work. So who are we talking about in the AST group? Um, there are a total of a hundred and forty-six employees. Out of those a hundred and forty-six employees, eighty-six we classify as administrative. And that's important to note that that's how we classify them, and in a minute, I'll explain why that's important. Thirteen are supervisory and forty-seven are technical. One of the challenges of doing this comparison is that there's variation district to district across the state regarding which positions are identified as administrative. In Kenosha, we identify eighty-six as administrative. Later in the presentation, you're going to see that according to DPI's definition, fifty-eight are identified as administrative for Kenosha. So, and I'm gonna get into where that um, why that is here in a minute. But when we were running comparisons, um, I'm not saying that any district did it wrong or is illegal in how they did it. It's just they're allowed to do it differently. So we really had to dive into um, there are a couple, I'll explain why when we get into some of our more in-depth comparisons. Here is a listing of all of the administrative positions in Kenosha Unified. Uh, these positions, uh, the salary range for these positions is eighty-five thousand dollars to a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. And one of the things I want to call your attention to when we talk about differences is right here. Uh, there's coordinator positions here in Kenosha Unified that we identify as administrative. When I was in Racine, uh coordinator was identified as a part of the teaching unit. Um, and directors only were identified as administrators. So, and according to DPI, when we start cleaning up that data, we remove some of those positions um to get to the common definition of what an administrator is. We used to call them, cor- coordinators used to be teachers here in Kenosha Unified. So again, like I, yep, to my point, that's one of the differences that we are, one of the challenges. There's not really a right or a wrong answer. There's latitude, it just makes comparisons very difficult. So when you see our comparison, if we remove any position that isn't part of the DPI definition. Additionally, um, there's going to be a couple of districts that classify their business manager not as an administrative position. They classify it as other. Typically, the business manager is one of the top five positions in a school district, and that's going to have a different impact on some of the averages that we see as well. We identify it as administrative, um Racine and Green Bay do not. So again, it's just, this is a very challenging comparison to run based on some of those nuances. These are the supervisory positions. Uh, there are thirteen supervisory positions, and the salary range uh in these category goes from about seventy-six thousand to a hundred and seven thousand. The technical positions in the district, there are forty-seven of them. Uh, these positions go from, the salary range is fi- fifty-thousand-six-hundred to about eighty-nine thousand. And many of these positions um exist in the schools, and they provide a support in the schools. You can see the second to bottom line is a technology support technician, a TST. And just about half of the technical positions are those positions that are in the schools, helping with um fixing computers, making sure the technology works. But again, that's um just for your information to have. So we did run a, this is an internal salary range comparison. Uh, when we ran this internal salary range comparison, we again had to make some assumptions. Um, and I want to be very clear that the assumptions that we made were just to come up with some sort of metric. We um, it was, this was difficult to do comparison. So what we looked at were um teacher salaries, administrative salaries, and then we looked at the number of calendar days in the work year. We looked at the number of hours in a work day, fully knowing that uh when we assumed seven-point-five hours for a teacher salary for a teacher work week, that there are, teachers work more than seven-point-five hours, that's just what's in our contract. Additionally, what we looked at for administrators was an eight-hour workday. Fully, knowing fully well that administrators work more than an eight-hour workday. Um, they're exempt positions, uh not subject to overtime, but again, we had to make some assumptions. So the starting, a couple items of note that I'd like to pull out. The starting teacher salary, uh, and this is prior to any CPI increase. So for the last school year that we completed back in June, the starting teacher salary was forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-two. And we had sixty-one-point-two-five um teachers on that uh level. The hourly, breaking that down, again, a hundred and ninety-five days, seven-point-five hours divided by uh the salary breaks down to about thirty-three dollars, seventy cents per hour. And again, as teachers progress through the salary schedule, the top of the teacher's salary schedule is ninety-nine thousand dollars a year. And we have uh roughly two-hundred-and-ten teachers on that um part of the salary schedule, which breaks down to sixty-seven dollars and seventy cents per hour. Looking at, how does this compare internally to our, some of our AST positions? Uh, the starting salary, as I mentioned, uh where many of our, where a couple of our technicians are, two of them, is fifty-thousand, sixty-one. Uh, that is an hourly rate, and again, this is out of hun- two-hundred-and-sixty days at an eight-hour day. Uh, dividing that, we come to twenty-four dollars, thirty-three cents an hour. Uh, the top administrative one, and this is with um my salary as superintendent removed from this calculation, is a hundred and seventy-seven, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three-hundred-and-eleven dollars uh as an annual salary. There's two administrators at this with a hourly rate of eighty-five, twenty-five. Um, and then for rate of comparison, looking at the top elementary principal, the top elementary principal um rate with their salary uh of one-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand, three-hundred-and-seventy-two, the hourly rate breaks out to be about, uh, breaks out to be uh sixty-three, four, sixty-four. The top middle school assistant principal, the hourly rate breaks out to be sixty-two, thirty-four. Top high school principal, sixty-four, ninety-four. Those three salaries I call out because they are below the hourly, and again, in air quotes, the hourly rate for a um, for a top teacher salary. The um other salaries are, you can get an idea of the other amounts there on that, on that shalla- salary range comparison. This is what we use to do some of our external comparisons. Um, and looking at uh districts in the state of Wisconsin, the DPI has a um public website that uh catalogs the salaries of all um, all staff, all school staff, not just um administrators, but anybody in the public school system. And this is where we got our information for this comparison, and I just put that up. There also may be errors in, in the submission of this, and I want to call that out as well, and some differences. It's not audited, um DPI doesn't audit it. There may be errors, but again, this is the best data that we had to compare district to district in the state of Wisconsin. So this is deep, it's very hard to read, but uh um, so I'm not expecting you to read it, but these are the categories. So when we determine what, when I mentioned earlier, we identified um eighty-six, I believe, positions as administrative in Kenosha. When we use DPI's definition, it goes down to fifty-eight. But this was putting everybody on the same playing field as far as what positions are identified as um, as administrative. So this was the common definition that we use for our comparisons. Uh, one of the um requests for information was looking at how does Kenosha compare to the top uh ten districts in the state uh as far as size goes. This chart does that. Um, it does show a um, where are the top ten districts? The average, and there's a couple of things that I want to pull out because they're important to note as we go through this and as we dove into this data. The average salary range for the top um ten school districts in the state of Wisconsin is between ninety-six thousand and one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, seven-hundred. So that's the range. Um, Kenosha, as you can see, is at one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, forty-eight, so towards the top of the range. A th- an important thing to note on this, however, is the number of administrators in each district because that impacts the overall average. Fewer administrators um that are lower paid are going to increase your salary level. So when we look at Kenosha with a student population of eighteen thousand, three-hundred-and-fifteen students, we have fifty-eight administrators. Green Bay has, I believe, sixty students more than we have. They have ninety-two administrators. Racine has twenty-five-hundred less students than us, and they have eighty administrators. So when, and I'm gonna break down those a li- in a little bit, I'm gonna break that down a little bit more. But the number of administrators compared to the number of students when we look at the ten largest is an interesting uh point to note. This chart is again very small to read. We also took a look at, besides the top ten largest, we also took a look at what are the administrator salaries from surrounding districts. And there are many uh smaller districts out there. The largest district on this slide is Elkhorn, which ha- which has about thirty-five-hundred students and twenty-four administrators. In many of these smaller districts, and you can see the average uh salary in the smaller districts is much less. Um, it runs from, and I'm sorry, I didn't uh prepare this part. It runs from seventy-one thousand in Twin Lakes to about a hundred and twenty thousand in Geneva and Raymond. So just to give you an idea of the range. However, in many of these smaller districts, um, I, and I did come, one of my first, uh, my first superintendent job was at Richmond School District in Waukesha County, and there were five-hundred students in one school. In many of these smaller districts, you have a district administrator, a principal, and maybe a special education director, which again is going to bring down the overall average. It's, to me, this is kind of like comparing scoops to Dairy Queen. The model breaks down when you go to scale. Um, it's just a very, i- it's a very hard comparison to run. And I would also say that my job in Richmond was much easier than my job in, here in Kenosha. And looking at administrator salaries from Illinois, we did dip into Illinois to see what uh some of the comparisons were. And again, we, you notice the average salary of Round Lake, uh ninety-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two. One thing I want to note on this is, um, I was a teacher in Main Township for a couple of years, which is represented on this um chart. Main Township is a three-high school, school district. There's uh east, south, and west, six thousand students. And they have more administrators in Main Township than we have here in Kenosha Unified for eighteen thousand. So again, it's very difficult in drawing an apples-to-apples comparison, and I'm gonna do, we did our best to provide that uh to the board. So in, for those reasons that I mentioned, we focused, we really drilled down into two other districts that are, one is our neighbor and one is our s- our twin. Green Bay and Kenosha are very similar sized, about sixty students difference. And Racine, just to our north, is, I often hear Racine used in comparisons. So we focused on um really drilling down into these two districts for some more comparisons. And again, I mentioned this earlier, uh, we looked at the total number of administrators and the total spend on administrative salaries in those districts. Um, in looking at, and I don't want this, my fear is that this information will be u- used and weaponized against Green Bay and against Racine. That is not my goal, I just wanted to use this as a comparison. And this is publicly available data. So in Green Bay right now is going through a rightsizing process. We completed our rightsizing process, and by going through that, we did have significant reductions um in our AST population, in our AST ranks. So in looking at Green Bay, um, their administrative spend is, um, I'm sorry, moved my notes before I was ready. Uh, Green Bay has thirty-three and a half more administrative positions. They spend four million dollars a year more on administrators, and there are sixty more students in that district compared to Kenosha. In Racine, they have twenty-two administrators. They spend one-point-seven million dollars a year more on administrative salaries, and they have twenty-five-hundred less students. And that does impact the averages. You can see our average is higher than both Green Bay and Racine. We also wanted to provide a bit of context in looking at teacher salaries. And Kenosha compares uh very, very closely with Racine. Um, the average salary in Racine is um seventy-two thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-two. The average salary in Kenosha is seventy-two thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy. And again, we're looking at, when you take a look at the salary schedule, people are at different points. We've got a range of forty-nine thousand to ninety-nine thousand. I'm not, I don't know Racine's salary schedule off the top of my head. I believe their starting salary is now slightly above ours, uh, because they've had, the two years where we had uh two and four percent increases with CPI, they had four and eight. Uh, they also had a successful referendum. Those are all factors that figure into this. Uh, we are, our, our teacher salaries though are still um several thousand dollars ahead of Green Bay's. And you can take a look at our overall spend. Our overall spend on um teacher positions is higher than Racine's uh by a couple million dollars. What this chart does is, it just puts all of that information, it summarizes the last two slides that I just went through. But you can see on the right-hand side, um, those are the total spend in salaries um that are um, that each district makes. So Green Bay spends a hundred and twenty-five million, about a hundred and twenty-five and a half million dollars on salaries. Racine is just below a hundred and nine million, and Kenosha is at a hundred and nine uh million, one-hundred-and-thirty thousand. So there's a lot of similarities between those and again, um, when we're looking at, just providing context for everything. So some of the key findings um that we came away with, um, compared to Green Bay, which is closest to us and Racine, which is closest in size to us, and Racine, which is closest proximity-wise, uh, we operate with significantly fewer administrators, uh thirty-six less administrative staff than Green Bay and twenty-seven percent less administrative staff than in Racine. I just want to note too, uh, before I take any questions, that when we closed seven schools last year uh through rightsizing, it really took everyone in the school district working together to make this happen as smoothly as it did. Stories of large fights and community upheaval that were caused by past school closings, closings were shared with me as we began the previous school year. The AST group working together with teachers, facilities, staff, secretarial staff, and ESPs, everybody functioned together as a high-performing team to make last year's transition after rightsizing a success, and that's because of teamwork. My duty as a superintendent is to build the best team possible to do good things for our students. I need strong leaders in our departments and our schools to do this. And that's why I'm recommending providing a full CPI increase for all employee groups, including the ASTs. That was the rationale behind my recommendation. Um, at this point, if there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Questions? Dr. Price.
Uh, thank you for the presentation, it was very helpful. Um, and part of our, I think part of the reason moving this to another month was to get this type of information. It's uh quite complex in terms of what is administrative, what's supervisory, technical. Just, just for clarification, so w- w- when I think of what is an administrator, that's the person that hires and fires. But I'm thinking we have different definitions, and I was just wondering if we could go through what are the differences between DPI's understanding? And then also what is supervisory? Is that we're talking more about smaller type of units or just, just so we know and we can message to the rest of the public, what?
I'll start and then Kevin and Tark, if you want to jump in. So it, one of the, uh, just to provide a little background, this is what I've learned um about some history that I wasn't here for, but others had, were. There was a time, maybe fifteen years ago, twelve, fifteen years ago, where there was a group of employees that were known as miscellaneous. And um, these, the decision was made twelve or fifteen years ago to move that miscellaneous group of employees into the technical group of employees and treat them as technical employees. I don't, I wasn't around, I don't unders- I can understand the rationale from, we want everybody to have a home and have a category. But that was, when we look at the Ts, uh, that's why I believe there's such a variation in the T group, is that uh many of these positions are essential, for example, payroll. Um, we don't want, we want to make sure that we have a reliable person, trustworthy, high integrity, handling the payroll of the district. With, not, without supervisory uh roles in there. So that, and there are some other um variations I know with, with uh, in, I don't know, Chris, with the technicians, um, why they're in the technical group?
Yeah, that, going back uh thirteen, fourteen years, um, prior to that conversion of miscellaneous into the technical group, there was approximately about six or seven positions identified that were just in the Ts. So the, the group AST existed at the same time we also had a miscellaneous group. When the district and, and some of you were on the board, and some of you were on board way back when, when we had, you know, two years of severe- you know, two years of severe budget deficits, and there, there had to be a lot of difficult decisions made then. And, um, because the, the, the building technicians now comprise approximately half of the technical group, that originated, uh, when they were originally like lab aides, when computer labs were first emerging or becoming commonplace in the schools, and, and they were lab aides, and so, um, that's, that's what originated, uh, a large portion of the miscellaneous group. And since they aligned to technical responsibilities, the, the move was to get them out of miscellaneous because we really had to remove any miscellaneous categories and align them appropriately for, for HR-related purposes and organizational standards. And, and so that, that converted to there. But they were, um, modified in that sense that they were removed from miscellaneous and then converted into the technical group.
So that's a bit of the technical. The supervisory positions, um, many of these exist in our buildings and grounds, um, department, where the, or, and the technical department as well, where there are, um, they manage a department. Uh, they're in charge of, um, managing different departments and providing evaluations of staff in those departments and recommendations for hiring. The administrative positions, uh, that we have here, many of these are, uh, these would have supervisory duties or, um, related type of, if it's not a direct supervisor, they provide input to, um, evaluation, so. And again, there's, there's variation, as I mentioned, with, you know, coordinators. When I was in Racine, they were teaching positions, and apparently in Kenosha, they were for a while as well, with the director doing, um, some of the administrative and evaluation work.
For, just one other piece, so, i- as I'm understanding coordinator here, that's a, tends to be a former teacher, or like a teacher leader, coach, or would this be a, right?
Wendy can probably address that best.
Yep, so we have curriculum coordinators, um, for science, social studies, ELA, and math. In the past, we had elementary and secondary for each content area. We have, um, taken some cuts, and now we have one, uh, reading and social stu- studies, and one science and math coordinator at each elementary and secondary level. Um, we also have a-
Each level, so it's like three?
Nope, we only have, we have-
One person per level?
Yes, for two content areas. Yep, and then we have a coordinator for, um, world language ESL services. Um, so yes, those coordinators typically had been teachers and moved up into the ranks of administration within teaching and learning.
Other questions?
Yeah, I, I just, not question, but I just add, like internally, the difference between an A administrative and S is an internal classification. If you're looking at federal standards on employee classifications, they're both supervisory, they're both management, they both evaluate, they're both responsible for staff, they both operate semi-independently of having somebody give them instruction, so that, there's gonna be that difference.
That's kind of a typical way of explaining it, you know, for purposes of like a union, for example, like who is the person that does the evaluation like that, so. I appreciate that. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, and to add a little to that too, so I think, Mac, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the district went through salary reorganization as far as the salary charts, probably back in twenty-seventeen, so a little before my time, but understanding that then, that's when they came up with those three categories. If you wanna break them down a little farther though, in my understanding and reading through that logic, was they were trying to mirror the EEO one category, so districts are under EEO five, probably you know the CEO five, private sector are under EEO one, but you have then eight categories or nine categories. So they may have then combined, under A's administrative, taking the first, the top three or four categories in the EEO section and say, and, and, and categorized them as somewhat supervisory. So part of that analysis then, when the district assigned As and S's, as part of that, had you had to have some supervisory contact to whether you're gonna be an A or an S, where you see Ts wouldn't have those.
So in the AST group, there, there are advantages though, like you guys get different, like, packages for retirement, I guess you'd say, like sixty-six day, sixty-six days paid back, where nobody else gets that. And then also, isn't it like something with the insurance, like you guys get the family plan, where everybody else would have to pay for the family plan unless they go till sixty-two instead of fifty-five. So like the whole package is different, 'cause I keep getting all these emails about, you know, the same, but they're not the same. AST groups have advantages that the other groups do not have.
You're, you're correct. Remember, if, uh, what, a couple months ago, the board, we brought, uh, before the board, the AST policy, policy, the, the agreement. Um, and so that spelled out what the differences were as far as benefits for payouts for vacation or sick time or that type of thing, yeah. And then who would be eligible for, um, retiree benefits, if they're eligible, what that age is and how many years of service they have to have.
So- I just wanted to make sure people knew that there is a difference between being in the AST group than being just a regular.
And for clarification, in the, um, online, it, the June agenda, uh, which is online, it does have the AST contract that we, that we did approve. Um, also, just a question, um, for Kevin, do any of the AST group qualify for, uh, teacher retirement? The, the teacher retirement, uh, system, are they?
WRS, so all-
All of them, everybody does, including Dr. Weiss.
Right, all district employees, all, uh, state of Wisconsin employees, regardless of what district you're in, so if I worked at Racine, come here, that benefit follows you.
Alright.
Um, and so WRS has its own retirement criteria.
Right, all employees that hit that threshold of, I believe it's eight hundred, a hour average, all employees, regardless of group, teacher, administrator, custodian.
But not subs.
If they hit the hours.
If they hit the hours, okay.
That was gonna be my question too. Actually, I think that the substitutes do fall under WRS, if they hit-
Everybody.
How many, how many hours is like?
I believe it's eight hundred eighty in a twelve-month period, average, yeah.
I'm sorry, just had one, one more, um, someone asked me about this, um, but, uh, substitute teachers aren't covered under the, uh, the CPI.
Next item.
That's a great segue.
On that schedule, yes.
Ready for that next item?
Yes, so thank you. Uh, the next item is, is there a way to turn that on? Thank you, Tark. Um, the next item is, um, base wage increase for non-full-time equivalent hourly wage employees. And I believe, um, that's Tark, and I know he's working with the tech right now too, so. Um, but this was a request that I believe Mr. Turney had at the last, um, several, um, board meetings times we've met, so.
Alright, so this will be, uh, kind of a joint HR finance piece, but we put together some information here. So we're talking about what we're referring to as the non-FTE wage table. So the proposal that we're going to bring to you at the board meeting in August is to apply the two point nine five percent increase to all of the items on that schedule, except for these two highlighted items. The summer school rates, and the reason being is that those are separately decided upon by the board. You guys decide that at the, I believe it's January time, when you get the summer school report and the budget request for the upcoming summer school session. So we do have new thing in there where we're tying those summer school rates to the starting salaries of the teacher pay, if you recall that. So you, that, you just did that a couple months ago. So that will come to you again for the next summer school session. And then items that we're calling fixed rates. So these are just items that have already actually been reviewed not too long ago, and some of them actually require individual board action. Think of your expulsion hearing officers. So there's a report that comes to the board, and you approve the expulsion hearing officer and the rate of pay. So that happens at a separate time, so that's why those two things are being excluded from the two point nine five percent, uh, recommendation. And then we are looking at potentially redesigning the schedule, which I'm gonna put up here shortly, just to kind of make these items broken out and a little bit more clear. So this is the published list that's on the website right now for our staff. And it's small print, but you can see all the different rates, and I've highlighted the ones that would be excluded from the two point nine five percent.
Tark, Tark, where would this be on our website?
Under staff, human resources, and then payroll, I believe.
Do you need a-
You can see all of the pay schedules.
Can anyone log in to see it, or can anyone?
All of our staff can.
All the staff?
Yeah, you need staff credentials.
Alright.
Yeah, it's not a public site. On here, you see everything from the rate that we pay student helpers when we have them, uh, to the game managing hourly rate, to substitute teachers. To Dr. Price's point, you'll see those included on here as well, so there is the recommendation to include the two point nine five percent on our substitute teacher rates. We now pay two different rates on substitutes. We pay, for those of you that used to be around, we used to pay multiple rates, limited, unlimited, long-term. All of that's gone. Now we pay a regular sub rate, we pay a long-term sub rate. Both of those would have the applicable two point nine five percent. Along with, you'll see in Level Z, excuse the small print, but the teacher in-house sub rate, which was established by the board at twenty-five dollars an hour, would also receive the two point nine five percent increase. This is a long exhaustive schedule of all of the rates that are approved when they're needed. That doesn't mean that we have all of these things actually in play right now. They're just approved rates to be used as needed. And some of them are actually old, like CLC, non-certified instructor, we don't even have CLC anymore. CLC was tied to an old grant, if you remember that, that the district no longer has. So there are some pieces that I, I think we're going to bring forward through human resources to clean up the schedule a little bit. But these are going to be recommended to apply the two point nine five percent increase to. Now, the hard part of estimating a cost for these comes into the fact that they are all variable hour rates, and as needed. So when a, a school has one of these, they apply the rate, send in timesheet, and we pay it. We do not utilize a time and attendance system, like most, like in the real world where you're swiping in, swiping out, and you're tracking that, that's not happening here. It's a, a little bit of an honor system where employees are working, submitting the timesheet to their manager supervisor, that's being turned into payroll-to-pay. The true control of a time and attendance system would have like pre-approved jobs, everybody set up for. Uh, hiring managers would have to clear that through HR first. HR would assign the rate and say, yes, here it is, set up the assignment for them, and then employees would be able to charge time against those pre-approved assignments. We are not there right now, so we are limited in, in the detail of information that we can provide and analyze. But on the bottom here, there are some of these positions that are a little bit more, uh, consistent, I'll say, and have a budget line item associated with them, so I can give you a little bit more of an idea. So we have substitute teachers and special ed ESPs, that's where we sub. So when you hear us talk about a sub-budget for the district, that's who we're talking about. That's what we sub. Substitute custodians, so the facilities department has the line item that pays for the substitute custodian, so we can kind of see that a little bit more visibly. Noon hour supervision costs, so that's the, uh, helpers that help during the lunch hour. And those are actually contained within each individual school's discretionary budgets, so we have a little bit more visibility to those items. Uh, part-time library clerks is the same thing, and then we have our police liaisons. So our schools have a budget allocated to them throughout the years that give them what we call security funding, and this is the hourly rate. It's actually twenty-five dollars an hour, I believe, currently, that we're paying those, what we used to call off-duty police officers, police liaison, security rates. So here's just a snapshot of the kind of things that, uh, Corey in payroll was able to pull for us. We pay, not to go down this rabbit hole too far, but we pay our regular FTE employees, full-time equivalent employees, on a regular payroll basis. So you're assumed, you have a calendar, you have hours per day. We pay that on an ex- on a exception basis, so you're going to get that pay unless you have some reason for it to be deducted. As opposed to these, what we call time card batches, where it's just random hours that we pay that pay period when it's collected. So the summary, this is kind of the detail of what we can get. Regular time card, some of the pieces, like summer school has their own coding, substitute teacher, game management, noon hour supervision, et cetera. So I can estimate, here's the total hours, here's the total pay, seven point two million dollars of timesheet pay last year, last fiscal year, twenty-five. What would two point nine five percent increase be on those total amounts on each of the different categories? And then what do I feel would be the budget impact? And you'll see, that's the column that I want you to focus on, because the summer school portion, remember we talked, we're not applying it to that. Summer school will have its own discussion later. So we can back out that thirty-four thousand dollar increase. And then the substitute teacher, that will have an impact, but looking at the prelimi- preliminary results for this year's fiscal year that we're still auditing and going through, I'm seeing that we didn't use the full substitute budget allocation that we had. Partially being because we added a million dollars to that last year, if you recall. Remember when we ended Esser and we retained building subs? The board approved adding a million dollars to retain ten HR-controlled building subs. That number included health insurance for those building subs, because those are ones that report every single day and have a job, regardless. So they would hit the thirty-hour-a-week average for ACA and be eligible for benefits. Whether or not they took them is a different story, but we have some room in the substitute teacher budget, so I believe that you can do the increase without having to add to that budget line item. Add up everything else, and I'm approximately gonna call it about a hundred thousand dollar increase, with the caveat that there are also those additional salary-related benefits that we really can't estimate based on here because of what Ms. Mata was asking before, who qualifies for Wisconsin retirement system or not. Once you do hit that threshold, there's some other pieces that kick in. So if you're somebody that doesn't qualify for Wisconsin retirement, if you, if you haven't hit your hours yet, we need to add about two point four-five percent benefits. But if you do qualify for Wisconsin retirement, then you're kicked in full FICA Medicare, workers' comp, and the WRS component. Now you're talking about a fifteen percent added piece, so I'm still comfortable with this number. It's going to be, you know, a hundred to a hundred fifteen thousand. But I believe that that's what the budget impact would look like.
Questions? Yes, Carl?
Um, thanks for this. Um, one of the things that I think that came up in the last, uh, meeting when we discussed this, the July meeting, um, was that, one of the things that's kind of tricky about it is that they come from various fund sources. Um, and they're paid from, because they're paid from various departments or whatever. Do you have any ideas far as like what that impact would be to various department budgets? Like, is it going to be a major strain or anything like that?
It's, uh, we don't have that broken down yet. That's where the difficulty is going to come in. But I know like the facilities budget is one that is already over on their sub-custodian budget line, so that would be strained. So that would be something where in these costs, it's embedded in that regular time card line, we would have to add to the facilities department discretionary budget to compensate for those rates. All of the school budgets, school discretionary budgets, we would have to add to the discretionary budgets to compensate for the additional hourly rate. Where we wouldn't have to add is, is like food services. So on this list, and this is where you're talking about like different funding sources.
Right.
There are cafeteria workers on Level L here. Cafeteria workers are completely paid out of Fund Fifty, the food services fund, which is healthy, which can absorb the additional increase, and that's a self-sustaining fund. So that wouldn't have an operational stress, I would say, for that piece of it. So it's, it's hard to pick this apart, but that's the kind of things that we would be looking at on each one of those different department budgets.
Thanks for doing this. It's overdue. Thank you. Thanks for doing this, it's overdue, thank you.
Other questions? Bob, anything?
I was gonna say, so it is doable, or I was told it wasn't, but we're doing it.
Yeah, we're doing it, yeah, okay. Alright, uh, do we wanna move on then?
Um, anaphylaxis policy.
Thank you, so last October, we revised policy five-five-three-four-point-one. Our anaphylactic, uh, policy, we needed to update our procedures. And, um, since that update, the language has, um, from the medical. World has been updated, the, uh, treatment has been updated. We had written in this policy the words auto-injector. Because that was the delivery device that was, um, was used. Since that time, there is a new delivery device, which is a nasal, um, injector. Along with the intramuscular injector. So this is simply clarifying that language within the policy. And then updating our training and, um, staff information. Uh, so it's, it's really no change to the policy, but just updating that language.
Uh, Dr. Price?
Lot to read this week, so I'm catching up here. But, um, so I, I noticed there's a, there is a change about, um, keeping a person immune from civil liability. At the end here, can you just go to, into that a little bit more?
Say, say that again, civil liability?
Oh, it's just the last part about the delivery of the epinephrine. That if a person is doing it in good faith, like a teacher or somebody who hasn't been trained or who is not a health professional.
Yep, that they are acting in good faith. Um, and they are immune from ci- civil liability, much like, um, somebody administering CPR. They're doing that in good faith. Um, but we do train all of our office staff who would be administering a rescued, or any, any medic- medication. So they are trained. And we go through that training yearly. So the only, um, update I would have is in the cover report. We had originally, um, asked for the August twenty-sixth board meeting to be the first read, and then the September twenty-third. To be the second read, since this is such a slight, um, change. I am going to change the board report with your approval. So that we could do first and second read at the August twenty-sixth meeting.
Does anybody have any issue with that? Uh, I mean, I know that we were talking about having first read, then send it to committee and whatever, but this is a fairly minor one. And it'd be nice to get in place before the school year starts. Okay, thanks, thanks, Wendy. Uh, next?
Yep, our next item is, uh, transportation, um, of students attending public and private schools. And, uh, Jeff Marks and John Seder are here. They prob- uh, Bill, would you mind loaning him your mic? Thanks.
Yeah, so the only thing that is, um, in front of you again is the annual, every year we ha- I have to come and have to present to you our transportation policies. That the school district will do, again, there's no changes to it, we're following state statutes. If there's questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but otherwise, it's pretty clear-cut what we do every year.
Do we have questions, Dr. Price?
It's a, the same question I ask every year, how much it costs the district to bus kids going to private schools? I think the last time Tariq had shown us, it was several hundred thousand dollars, right? And, uh, it's probably same this year, about the same.
Yeah, um, I can again send it back to you guys. Any numbers on there, but again, some of the private schools that we provide, only reason why, the main reason we do it right is state statute.
Yeah, I follow.
It's just a matter of how we do it, it's whether it's a school bus or outside service or a parent can try.
And it's, uh, I, I read it, I think I understood it to be within five miles or.
School is reaching outside our district boundary to another district boundary. But again, that means that, that boundary cannot be claimed in another district. So as an example, if the Catholic school system wants to go outside of Kenosha Unified School District, they can go five miles outside of it. But also that boundary cannot be claimed by another Catholic school system. Um, in today's world, all those boundaries are pretty much gobbling up. They're the same dinosaurs, they're shrinking, um, so they will not give up territory anymore. So we're pretty secure and safe on that matter.
That's interesting information, again, I learn something every time, but I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Uh, John has the next one too, about the, um, about some land that's being gifted to us, I guess.
Nice.
Yeah, good afternoon. Um, if you have your, uh, report on this, I wanna refer to some of the attachments that are further on. It's easier to kind of describe a property issue if you can actually see it. So attachment one is the, uh, the site plan of the, uh, property in question, if you see that, is that included or got that? So the blue area on there is the, uh, parcel of land that's going to be conveyed to, uh, basically the city of Kenosha from the county. And that was done through a memo of understanding, and that was approved by the, um, common council already, city of Kenosha. And then as we move forward in that, that property then will be conveyed to the Kenosha Unified School District, um, through a quick claim deed. Um, but just to refer to this, uh, diagram again, if you look at, uh, the location, this is on Highway one fifty-eight. Um, which is fifty-second, uh, street and, uh, sixty-eighth avenue. And kind of the brief history of how this developed, if you look across the street, that's the business park of Kenosha. That was developed before this property was, um, developed into the condominiums and the housing and the YMCA. And whoever owned that land prior, um, in order for the right-of-way, um, intersection to happen, there's a stoplight there. They lined the streets up in a north-south direction, so whoever owned that property to the west, kind of got. Got that little parcel of land as included in their property. So as time went on, this was developed as a, a real estate project. Um, the, the company that did it was called Regency Hills Development. They never paid their taxes on this property for like twelve years, but after Indian Trail was developed, it kind of was almost part of our property. We maintain it right now, we shovel the walks, we do everything, so. The county wanted to kind of clear up this situation since they weren't getting any revenue from taxes. They don't wanna own land that really doesn't, uh, produce any type of income. It causes, um, problems for the county treasurer and the board, or the land information office, so. The county approached Pat here and said, hey, we can do this process where the land can be transferred to the city first. Cause the county can't directly, uh, give land to private property owners, so. The conveyance is going to go from the, um, county to the city, and then from the city to Kenosha Unified. And, um, there is a member, uh, memo of understanding attached to this as well, that's the third attachment. That kind of outlays the whole process that's gonna take place. And then in the end, there's a schedule that I put together on the, uh, last page of the summary. So on July twenty-first, the common council did approve this already, um, we're speaking about it today, um, on August fourteenth. When it gets to the county board level, that's gonna be the meeting coming up on August, uh, nineteenth, they're going to, uh, vote on approving this. They, they see no reason why it shouldn't be approved there. So then at the August twenty-sixth, Kenosha Unified, uh, school board meeting, um, you'll have the opportunity to approve this. If that does happen, then, um, there will be a board of electors in September that will have to do the final approval of that. Once all that's done, then the conveyance will happen, it's just a la- a, a matter of, um, signing some quick claim deed. Uh, documents and then register of deeds, um, applications and filing it, so. It's kind of a nice piece, um, in the end for us to acquire because, um, we do maintain it already. It'll just be contiguous to our property now, so there's really no reason that, uh, it wouldn't benefit us for having this.
Questions for John? Yes, Dr. Price?
Any grand plans to use it for something?
Not, not anything more, I mean, if you look at where the retention area is, I mean, we maintain it, it looks good, it's, it's, uh. Will be part of our property, but it's really an undeveloped site, that's kind of why the, I think the prior owner said, let's give it up.
Thank you, so even if we, so we approve it at the board meeting, and then it goes to the annual meeting of electors?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Uh, next one, we have, um, controlled entrance funding options, so a couple of, um. Meetings ba- or a couple weeks ago, I believe, uh, Ms. Landry asked, um. What are some of our options with controlled entrances and, uh, funding options since the referendum failed? So I know Tark has done some work with our, um, PRA, I believe it is, PMA, um, and I'll turn it over to Tark.
Alright, thank you again, so this is the start of the discussion here, so we're gonna go through a couple things, this is. We're gonna give you some hypothetical scenarios and some kind of pros and cons of these different options, but there's a process to this. Alright, so first we're gonna talk about, as Dr. Weiss just said, remember that in the proposed referendum question back in February. Twenty-twenty-five, we had funded, included in there to complete. The controlled entrances on the last seven schools in our district that do not have controlled entrances. And it was kind of a very quick accelerated timeline that we had out there, we wanted all seven of them done within a couple months. And that's what kind of triggered the, the cost there. But the seven schools, just for recap, Bozal Elementary, Curtis Strange Elementary, Forest Park, Jeffrey. Harvey Whittier, and then the last remaining middle school is Lance Middle School. And the term controlled entrance, I think we should back up there for a second and just remind everybody what that really means. That doesn't mean just a locked door on the outside and then a vestibule and then another locked door. Controlled entrance is really a specific term that means controlling access of visitors to. Our hallways, to our classrooms, funneling them into like a main office area before they could have access to the hallways. So at the time, the initial projected cost was about twelve and a half million dollars for the construction. We were not able, we did not have the ability to just spend twelve and a half million dollars, so we would have had to borrow those funds. Which leads to interest costs. So now I'm gonna tell you what the true all-in cost, which means your principal enter- interest. So when you go buy a car for forty thousand dollars and you take out a five-year loan and they hit you with the interest. After five years, you didn't pay forty thousand dollars, you paid a lot more than that. So that's the same concept here. So at the time, and interest rates change. We were projecting about fifteen million dollars over the course of that five-year borrowing period would be the true all-in cost. And in, in addition to the construction, remember there was about four hundred fifty thousand dollars for upgrading. The kind of brains behind the camera system, AI-type things, um, and sec- security hardware items as well. So now let's talk about funding options, we've never stopped thinking about this, security's still priority in our district. But we have to be smart about it and how we do it. So here's some three initial options, and we're gonna talk about some pros and cons. And just because they're an option doesn't mean that they're something that we really ought to consider. But I'm giving you the, here's what you can do and here's kind of what you should do concepts. So we could propose another referendum, just focused on security and the seven controlled entrances. The board will have to contemplate and debate that, uh, and, you know, what's your tolerance for that? I'll get into some of the pros and cons with that later, the timing of when we can pose a referendum question is a challenge. Some of the state budget pieces that hit us with the equalization aid reductions. Which will pretty much lead, almost guaranteed, to tax increases on property taxes. Is another thing we should be considering before proposing another referendum. Um, the second option would be to potentially revise the scope of the projects. And then fund them gradually without borrowing money by planned use of reserves. What I mean by that is not doing all seven at once. Having the board say, okay, we'll knock out one a year for the next seven years. And then it would be a more palatable dollar amount that you could work with, that's one option. And revising the scope of the projects is something else I wanna talk about, that's gonna be a, a board. Item to contemplate. The third option, which I personally tend to lean on, would be to potentially borrow the funds. Needed to complete the seven controlled entrances, and you could revise the scope still. But under the revenue limit cap, which is the rule, if it's without a referendum, and we'll talk about that for a second. And then repay the debt service, potentially with planned use of reserves. So state law says you cannot borrow money of this dollar amount without. Your taxpayers' permission. And if you do, it has to count under your revenue limit authority. So everybody's familiar with that when we're talking about the revenue caps, right? That's our enrollment and our per pupil amount, and that's what governs most of our spending. So by doing this, you're committing to paying back that debt service under your revenue limit authority for the life of that borrowing. In order to do that, there's a process, so that would require the board adopting an initial resolution. And then having a publication, and then a petition period where a public could actually ob- object. And try to get enough signatures to stop that from happening. So there's a whole process involved there, and we would need to engage bond counsel and PMA, our financial advisors. And we would be going through that process, but that's one of the options there. To give you an example of what we're talking about, and excuse the small print again, sorry, but. Working with PMA, here's three hypothetical scenarios of today's interest rates. That we believe we would be eligible for. So this is broken down in three different sections, so it's just hypothetical. If we were to issue, and you'll notice not twelve and a half million dollars, but ten million dollars is what we used for the project number. We have been in contact with, uh, facilities and the construction companies. So we feel like that twelve and a half million dollar number was a little heavy, we feel like ten would be more. More, um, go ahead, Dr. Weiss.
Yeah, I was gonna add, one of the other reasons why it was more, why it was the twelve and a half million is we did. We were looking to push that, the timeline on that, to have it completed by, uh, January. And that would require us to use more contractors and not use any internal staff. Really, it would have been a totally con- contract, contracted workers doing that project as opposed to some internals, so. Ju- I just wanted to get, that's where that, some of that savings is coming from.
That's exactly right, so we're going to, just for the sake of argument here, call it ten, ten million dollars for the same project. So that's without adjusting the scope. So that means relocating those main offices in some of the buildings. Think of, uh, like Harvey, where the main office is at Harvey, smack dab in the middle of the building. If you're going to make a controlled entrance for that, there's a lot of remodel, a lot of moving. Um, Lance Middle School is another one that's very problematic, mo- and very expensive to move that main office to make a controlled entrance. So these are some of the things that the board also has to kind of contemplate. Return of investment, for lack of a better term, like, can we revise the scope of these projects, is the bang worth the buck? If you're increasing security by ten percent by doing this, is it worth two million dollars? Or is there something you could do to increase security by seven percent for half a million dollars? You, you know what I'm saying, that conceptually, board needs to kind of contemplate and wrestle with that. Do you want to go with the projects as-is, or are there some projects, maybe not all of them, some projects that we could look at in a different light? And say, what could we do to add security to that building without completely remodeling the building? Back to this, if we would borrow ten million dollars on a five-year bond. At an interest rate of four percent, you're talking about ten million dollars as principal payment. And about a million dollars of interest over those five years, so your total project's gonna cost about eleven million dollars. That's because you're paying it in five years, so it's not sitting there outstanding too long. If we were to do a ten-year bond issuance. Now the interest rates are gonna move a little bit too, so about four point two five percent. And you're talking about two point two million dollars of interest over the life of the borrowing, so now it's about a twelve million. Twelve point two million dollar project. And then finally, at a twenty-year issuance, which is kind of a standard for a bond. You're talking about maybe interest rates at four and a half percent. But total interest by the time you're done paying is over five million dollars, and now that's a fifteen million dollar project. But total interest by the time you're done paying is over five million dollars, and now that's a fifteen million dollar project. But. And sorry for, to all the car salesmen out there, when they talk about, well, what do you want your monthly payment to be? You're still gonna pay fifteen million dollars, but. That monthly payment number is what you're trying to manage in a budget. Now, for a school district with a fixed income, there is value to that. Because you have a controlled reduced number in an annual budget, so it does make sense to stretch out. The length of the borrowing sometimes, if you can live with that smaller number and work that into your budget. So you see right here in these little boxes, this is what we would have to carve out and pay each year. So it's a, if it's a five-year, we're paying two point two million dollars a year in principal and interest. If it's a ten-year, the annual amount is one point two million dollars. If it's a twenty-year, it's seven hundred fifty thousand. So that's what we have to come up with to make our payments every year. Everybody following me on that? This is what's called a public market bond. So if we would just go out to market. This would be like, almost like an R F P. We put it out there and say, Kenosha Unified wants to borrow ten million dollars. Who wants to kind of bid on it? And that's where it's a competitive process. We do have another option available to us called the State Trust Fund Loan. Some of you might have heard that, been familiar with it. There's pros and cons of the State Trust Fund Loan. They have their own kind of project period that you have to get your application in. But these projects, I did speak with them, our projects would qualify for a State Trust Fund Loan. However. Their interest rates are higher. So that, it's a little easier to get. You don't have to do the whole public. R F P, you don't have to go back through Moody's Ratings calls and all of that that we would have to do if we went out to public market. But State Trust Fund interest rates tend to be about one percent higher on each of these, and that would be a big deal when you're talking about a ten million dollar loan. So if you're talking about twenty years, instead of four and a half, we'd be looking at like a five and a half percent interest rate. So again, with items for consideration, equalization aid, we talked about that at the last board meeting. That seven million dollar estimated reduction in equalization aid because the state budget did not fund. More money in that pot to cover the three hundred twenty-five per pupil increase on a revenue limit authority. Will get pushed back onto the taxpayer. So we have to always keep that in mind now. Even with our failed referendum, we could see property tax increase. The next opportunities for districts to even put a question on the the ballot would be spring primary, February twenty-sixth. Which would mean that for the next year. And spring general election, April twenty-sixth. Um, questions for the board to think about? Do we need to do all seven projects at once, or are you comfortable with a gradual approach? Do we prioritize them and see where, what we deem is highest need or most at risk and then go backwards? Should the scopes of the project be revised? And then, just keeping in mind that when we use reserves, planned reserves, we have to do it smart, we have to do it controlled. We have to make sure that we're minimizing impacts on our operations so that we don't accidentally have unintended consequences and trigger. Short-term borrowing, which now that adds to the whole cost of the thing. And that's what I got for you.
Questions? Wheels are turning, huh? I just wanna say thank you for all of that information. I got a lot to think about.
Yeah, when we're talking about doing it gradually and stuff, I guess. How do, how do you prioritize who who's gonna be safer first? It just seems like that would be sort of a really sticky wicket. And you can't really go by at risk because that is not a determination of school shootings or or problems. You can't really tell. What's gonna happen.
That's the exact debate that we've had. Like, how do you pick? And then, God forbid, an incident happened, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I feel like if we're gonna do it, you just, you pick what we're gonna do, come up with that plan, and then just knock them out.
As far as the, as far as the public weighing in on it and approving, uh. I I guess I'm, I guess there might be some. Uh, some people out there that might wanna start a petition to sort of stop it and stuff, but really, I mean, that that just seems so. Anti-community, anti-child, you know, but who knows?
If we go a little bit into like the the cash flow piece, because, I mean, I know we talk about it quite frequently about how we don't wanna go into reserves because. You know, it's prevented us from having to go to short-term borrowing and stuff like that. If we did, say we did the ten, uh, the ten-year loan or something like that. Um, the payments you said were like one point two million a year? Um, I mean, that's one point two million that we're taking out of reserves that, you know, we would lose interest income on. Is that? Is that gonna be a significant impact, uh, to us?
It will reduce our interest revenue, but I don't think. Drastically. If we were to go a little bit more aggressive, that's when we're start. Losing our ability to invest the money for longer periods of time and needing it more for the cash flow. But I think, you know, somewhere around a million dollars a year, if that would to gradually reduce, I I think it would be. Absorbable. Not that we won't lose interest, we will, but not, not something that we're really gonna have too big of an impact.
Okay. I wanna see what else we can go into the reserves for, just kidding. I don't know, I guess, you know, off the top of my head, I guess the way that I'm kind of leaning is I just don't really feel good about a referendum, knowing that, like. You know, where we're at with the equalization aid. I mean, I think Tark's recommendation or not recommendation, but where you were kind of leaning. The option three of doing the borrowing is probably the best option at this point. It's not the greatest option, but it's. Probably the cleanest one that we could possibly do, and I'm, like, to Bob's point, I think we should probably, you know, I feel. I think it makes the most sense to just do it all at once.
Yeah, I don't know, I just wanna be here when, if that does happen and we didn't pull the trigger on it, you know what I mean? Going, damn, we could have did it, but we didn't. We decided these three schools don't get it, and then one of those three schools, I. I just think it's been long enough. It's twenty twenty-five. I mean, scare entrances are a norm now. We need to knock it out.
Um, in regards to the, uh, scaling back the project and stuff, what types of things would you do that could scale it back without affecting safety?
It'd be a bigger conversation, I think, with facilities and probably the safety committee that I would, I would recommend. That be looked at, but, you know, I I just take Lance Middle School for an easy example. Is there something we could do? And I think we had one of the committee members that asked a question before too, you know, does it really cost? Uh, well, I forgot what the estimate on Lance was, but it was, I think, close to two million dollars, I think, or. Potentially, something like that, because you're talking about a big, major remodel, and we don't have drywall buildings. And so it's, it's not something that anybody can do. We're talking about brickwork, we're talking about H VAC, you're talking about electrical. Potentially plumbing in Lance's case, because they have special ed bathrooms right there in the main office. Well, guess what? Our self-contained special ed units. Need their own bathrooms. So, I mean, it's, they're major, major projects. Is there something where we could incrementally, is there a different design for the Lance? I don't know. And I think we had a, a committee member say something, and not to. Boil it down to this, but like, if there was a guard shack, or you know, you know what I mean? I'm just. Just saying, are there options that you can incrementally get some benefit, maybe not the full? But if it's half the cost, then maybe is that something that you should consider? And I, I'm just throwing out hypotheticals out there. That's something that would really need to be studied and des- and designed.
Okay, other questions?
Uh, just a quick one. Are we planning to take action, um, at the August board meeting on this item, or is this, uh?
I think this one probably wouldn't be able to be ready for the August one. Uh, because there's a lot of pieces that need to be pulled together.
I think next steps would be kind of get, to get a board consensus of where we're going, and then we'd be engaging like bond council, and we'd, we'd start that whole. That whole process going.
Would you want us to do a consensus now about going forward?
I think there's some questions to be answered, though. The, uh, scopes, the project. I think you've kind of semi answered it. Everybody, I think, is not in their heads on the do them all at once. Like, we're not in favor of picking and choosing at this point. We did, I do wanna remind everybody, though, that when we were planning on doing this thing, we did do an R F P. We did have a vendor selection that was contingent. I believe John Riley. Was awarded the project, and I believe we gave them even a contingency letter that says, if we bring these projects back. There could be some scope adjustment, but we will have to reengage Riley, as they they were awarded the bid.
Quite well into schematic design. They started getting consultants on board. We started evaluating mechanical systems, electrical, so that's all in place. So that's kind of a benefit. If we gear up again, we're ready to go in that capacity.
Yeah. So in other words, if we wanted to, we could, we have all of that pre-work done, that pre-design work done. We could. Revive the project fairly quickly, if we wanted to do it as is.
How's, how soon could we get that on the agenda to vote on? Like, what would that take?
That's, yeah, I would, I'm just thinking out loud here. That would be, we would need. Facilities to take a look at, uh, building like Lance and get potential. Changes in the scope of that. We would need, and and Riley, I imagine too, um, if it's possible, and if it's not, that's. Um, we'd have to understand that as well. And then I'm, from what I'm, uh, hearing, um. And just, we would most likely then want to have the, uh, public, um, bond. I'm, I forget exactly what you call it, the public bond, public market bond, because that would be at the lowest rate. Uh, and that's, if I, that's what I would recommend, that we go with the lowest rate one. And then there's steps that we'd have to go through that Tark had up on that D P I website, that we'd have to chart out and plan out. Um, so that's something we can work on and we can bring it, I I hesitate to put a date on it. Um, just because I know that there's some variables in there that we don't have full control over. Um, but we would move forward on, and we continue work on it, um, and with a goal to bring it.
So we could expect to see an update at least on the September agenda review.
That makes sense.
I think that makes sense. So step one would be, at least from my side, is getting that dollar amount. So when we go out to bond, I'll need that before I can engage the financial advisors to do that part. And if it's ten million, we're, we're good, because it'll be like a not to exceed.
All right, next.
Okay, thank you. Um, Boys and Girls Club, Bill?
Thank you. I'm gonna invite Lloyd Lewin up, who's here from his supervisor's program with Boys and Girls Club, in case we have any questions for Lloyd. Um, this is a yearly review of the, uh, gang prevention, uh, program that we run with the Boys and Girls Club. We bring this forward every year at this time. Uh, there's no changes to the program being proposed. It's still sixty thousand dollars coming from Fund Eighty. Uh, to go to, which is part of the funding that Boys and Girls Clubs use to run this program. Uh, attachment A in the report is the year-end report, shows the data from the results from this past school year. Uh, attachment B is, uh, another piece of that year-end report. It's just data charts supporting how it went. Uh, attachment C is the program description and the goals for the program. And attachment D is the M O U for the two, two, twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and so. Uh, we would be recommending that the school board approve entering into this memorandum again with the Boys and Girls Club for the gang prevention program.
Questions? Yes, Dr. Price?
Uh, just welcome, and, uh, just, yeah, maybe you could just give us a sense of what, what the kids do and. The field trips or what other types of options that they, they have or?
Sure, some of the things that we, um, make sure to recover with the, with the youth that participate in the program. Um, is giving them, giving them different tools to sort of help them with their decision making. Oftentimes, one of the things that we know that the kids that participate are kids that generally have behavioral issues sometimes, maybe attendance issues, and sort of try to work through some of those things. Sort of get to the root causes of that and, um, see what we can do in regards to program and help to not only identify, but to sort of. See what we can come up with to help them sort of bridge that gap.
See that there are some, uh, college, college trips or affairs?
And so some of the things that we do is we do offer things like college trips, um, financial literacy, things of that nature.
I'm seeing that, uh, there's collaboration with the principals at the schools. Uh, do Boys and Girls Club members go into the schools to work with the, some of the students?
Yes, we do, we do. Um, all our things are primarily at the school, and, um, we do partner with each principal. Um, to find out, um, to tell us about the kids, um, and figure out, to help identify the kids. Um, not only the principals, but the school social workers as well.
Thank you. Other questions? Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Yep, our next item is annual seclusion restraint report, Chris.
Thank you, Dr. Weiss. This is the, uh, state required presentation for awareness and information. Related to the prior years, uh, somewhat of totals for the restraint and seclusion incidences, um, that took place on K S D property. Um, please keep in mind that, uh, when we look at this, we have to report out for mechanical restraint. Uh, but that does not include implementation devices that are utilized by a student prescribed for medical or related services. Physical restraint, uh, is when it works to immobilize a student, but it does not include a physical escort. Um, and in those particular cases, uh, they're handled by trained staff. Who've gone through the N C I or the non-combatant intervention training, specifically on how to deal with students, and all of these are in direct relation to the safety and well-being. You know, either as identified by, uh, students with disabilities related to their accommodations. Um, in, in their, uh, annual I Ps and or just for any other student in general. Uh, and then seclusion is the, um, temporary confinement, even though they still are in a monitored and supervised environment. Um, and if you look at the, um, specific reports broken down in the subsequent pages and appendices that. Uh, we have three, uh, locations, Bose, Forest Park, and Frank. Um, I don't want you to think that, that's the only place just doing it, it's because we have. Um, built out seclusion rooms specifically for this, where the students can't do any harm to themselves, and, and again, they are still monitored. There's, um, viewing. Um, access for staff to monitor them, and, and again, these are all just for the necessary duration. As identified for the health and safety, well-being, uh, for any related students.
Thank you. Questions? Uh, just for my own, um, a sensory room wouldn't be counted as seclusion, would it, or under some circumstances?
These, these have been built out, uh, specifically with, um, they're, they're moved any, uh, harmful. You know, components, there's no, there's no harm, um, you know, sharp corners or blunt objects in there, and, and again, it really is just to. Remove them and isolate them, and, and, and in most of these, if you look at the numbers and the breakdowns between, um, uh, students with disabilities and students that aren't, um. It's, it's more in alignment with what the I P team, uh, determines as a potential temporary measure, just to address the needs of the child. Specifically at that time.
Thank you. Okay.
I think Dr. Price had a.
Anything?
Uh, just, um, I was just noticing in terms of the idea incidences that account for maybe a, a student that has multiple. Multiple times physical, and, uh, uh, restraint has been used, or is this just a?
Yeah, so the, the report does break it down between, we have to report on incidences, but a- again, if, if there's this, uh, one of the sub-charts in here has the number of students, and so. When, when you look at these in totality, um, you know, it's, it's, it's only about thirty students, non, uh, special ed, and then about a hundred special ed, so. There are, there are some, some students that, that have identified needs where these will be repeated throughout the year. Uh, and, and again, as identified with those, uh, frequent meetings by the I P team to support the child. So there's, there's a lot of, uh, repeat instances. For students.
Thank you.
Uh, I had somebody reach out to me about this reporting, and they, they felt like, uh, there were a lot more at a couple of the schools that they work at. Um, than that are on this report. How would you go about verifying, like, this says whatever, eighteen, how do, what if there was thirty?
So what, what happens with the statutory requirements is that. Anytime there's one of these instances, mechanical restraint, physical restraint, or seclusion, that a, um. There has to be, uh, a report processed by the school, parent notification in no less than twenty-four hours, and it's usually that day that they're notified. Um, and then that report is generated, um, they're reviewed by the building administration. Uh, they're, they're entered into our student information system, and then, uh, any of the special ed or five or four identified ones are also then. Reviewed by the special ed department and the director of special ed. Um, it's. I, I'm not sidestepping this, I, my hand, my office handles the data component. Um, it's, I, I'm not sidestepping this, I, my hand, my office handles the data component piece of it. Uh, but this, this goes through a process of identification uh, and awareness at the school levels. I would say that if somebody contacted you and they had a concern for uh, underreporting that, they should start with the school specifically.
Yep, and I, just to add um, to uh, Chris's explanation, there's some, the definition for uh, restraint. Is, is pretty specific, so there could be, um, like a two-person transport of a student. Uh, where the staff members would have hands-on a student guiding them to a, an office. And I believe, Chris, that that is not identified.
Yeah, that's transported, they, they've clarified that language.
Right, so that would not qualify as a restraint, even though somebody looking at it could look and say they're restraining that kid. When in fact, it's a.
Escort.
It's a uh, procedure that's been identified as not a restraint, but a, I don't know what it would actually be called. But a guide, they're guiding, I'm using a two.
It's a, it's a non-reportable incident, so.
So that's, there may be some nuance there too.
Yeah, I would, I would urge them to contact the school principal and the, and the staff, uh, so they could look into it further.
Okay, any more questions? Alright, next.
Uh, Bill, uh, revision of seventeen-ten, uh, the Title Nine?
Yeah, so, um, we, through rightsizing and through meeting our budget. Last year, we eliminated some administrative positions and reassigned some people. And a position in my office was eliminated, and so we did a lot of moving positions around. Just to figure out who's gonna cover what and who's gonna be in charge of what. And so, long story short, the only change to this policy is on page forty-nine. Where Anthony Casper, who is the E-School Principal, who does a lot of work, if you know Tony. He works with our Administrative Review Committee and does a lot of uh, district level leadership in terms of. Uh, dealing with significant behaviors that happen um, in our schools. And so Anthony is, and Tony is becoming um, the primary Title Nine Coordinator. He was the Title Nine Decision Maker, um, along with uh, Beth Armset. Beth is going to be the Title Nine Decision Maker. Tony is going to join the ranks of Title Nine Coordinator. And so the only change that you'll see in that policy is um, Tony's name being added. As a title, additional Title Nine Coordinator.
Questions for Bill? Okay.
And just as a, just as a quick note that uh, we were. Are, we were recommending a first and second read, since it's just a change, it's a change in identifying the person who's in charge. There's no substantive change to the, to the policy at all, so it's just really adding Tony's name.
Anybody have an issue with having this as first and second read? Okay.
Thank you. Uh, we do have two resolutions, um, National Hispanic Heritage Month. And National Suicide Prevention Month, Prevention Awareness Month. Excuse me, um, I do have three verbal updates uh, for the board. Uh, the first one is, um, there may be, I guess there could probably be a lot of discussion around all of these. Um, the first one is Policy eighty-eight-fifty, uh, regarding the school board committees, um, and committee structure. And I, there was a um, um, a policy shared by Carl about this that I did put in your packet. So I don't know if you wanted to talk to it.
Um, yeah, sure.
I mean, I could, why don't I preface it? So one of the um, when we move to having the uh, agenda reviews as we do now. In public session with the full board, uh, we really, in essence, are using a committee of the whole structure. Uh, where um, agenda topics are discussed with the entire board. Prior to bringing them forward for approval, so that's a model of board governance. That to be on, in South Milwaukee, that's what I used. We also use, still utilize a committee structure. And when I was in Richmond, I had a committee structure, uh, and the idea was that the work would go to the committee, um, any big topics. So for example, it'd be, it would, the ones that we talked about in here with the um, controlled entrances would go to committee. Coming out of committee, there'd be a recommendation uh, to the full board as far as what action to take. We have both, um, and. My belief is that it's kind of awkward sometimes, and in a, I, I feel like sometimes it's very challenging to figure out. How do we use our committees? What do we talk about at a committee of the whole or agenda review meeting? So I have had this discussion with Carl and, and others. Not trying to hide anything from anyone, it just kind of comes up and I go, yeah, I feel like we're trying to, I, I feel like things get bottlenecked. Um, and we end up, so ideally, we want to go through all these presentations again, August twenty-sixth. We'd have a recommendation and they would be approved, um, based on the work, either in the committee of the whole or by the committee. So. Based on that conversation, I know Carl brought forward um, some ideas and some changes that are for discussion. The board can always review and do what it wishes, this is an eight-thousand series, um. Policy, which is board, that's in the board, how the board functions is eight-thousand series. So, I hope I teed it off, provided context, if you wanted to.
Yeah, that's good, thank you, um. So I think, you know, and, you know, kind of going off of what Dr. Weiss had mentioned. One of the suggestions that I think um, would kind of, I guess, help clarify the way that we govern and make the committees work a little bit better. Is maybe restoring some of the old policy language that we used to have when it came to uh, Policy eighty-eight-fifty. Being that, um, allowing uh, committee members to have voting capacity. But like, in a, in advisory kind of way, not binding. Um, they would serve two-year terms, terms would be staggered, the committee chair does the appointments. Giving them, I guess, the fact-finding capacity, rather than like how we've, how we've kind of run him, run those committees lately. Where it's been kind of repeat presentations and stuff that we're do- doing already here. So what you, what I had brought before you all was just, hon- honestly. My suggestions are not intended to be exhaustive at all whatsoever, these are just ideas that I thought could be helpful. A lot of this is old language, but a lot of this is also, you know, I guess some of my own little wish list too. Um, I added a fifth committee, because there's one thing that I think that we need um, as a district. And that's um, Legislative Affairs, um, and Policy. Um, whether that gets absorbed into an existing standing committee, we only have four committees. Or we have a fifth one entirely, I'm not, you know, like, I'm not completely wedded to, we can have that discussion. But I think, you know, he, um, bringing back the Legislative Committee like we used to have, um, would be beneficial. I think in terms of uh, the district's uh, stance on legislation and things that are coming up uh, down the pike. At the state level and potentially at the federal level as well, um, but yeah, so, this is it. So I mean, I guess if anybody has any thoughts or questions or input or anything like that, but.
Yeah, I agree with you, because I was on my Personnel Committee and a policy got sent down to that and it made it very awkward. It wasted a lot of people's times, like, these committees, people are volunteering their time, they need to be effective, and I felt like. It was only my first time being on committees, but it was kind of like, you start out with ten people, you end with two. Because it just, they don't feel like the committees are doing anything.
Right.
So I agree with you on that, having a policy committee, so if we want to have a policy discussion, send it down to that, not a personnel committee. And then have two board members arguing, um, that would be awesome. But I, I agree with this, I've talked to Dr. Weiss about it too, the committees don't seem very, I, I like the idea, I like the concept. They're just not doing much, you know, in my opinion, that's all I see it, it's kind of like you're being brought stuff to go. Sure.
So now, just a question for Carl, how do you see the agenda review process?
Well, I think what, what, how I would envision it is, you know, if the committees are empowered. And made to be more productive, you know, they would probably have a little bit more oversight of what would be on the board's agenda. And I think, I guess, if you can think of it in terms of it this way, they could function like agenda reviews. Where the community would have a, a chance to weigh in on agenda topics as well.
Yeah, I would, um, no, no pushback, I, why don't discussion, I just have another question, I'll hold my question. Uh, or if there's more discussion around that topic.
I, I mean, I could, I could weigh in, go ahead, Bob.
I just have one more, also having all the committee meetings in one day, forty-five minute blocks, makes it kind of hard to knock much out. By the time you get done just presenting what the committee is there for and introducing each other, you have fifteen minutes and then. So if you're gonna do that, I would say you get your own day, your own meeting, would be like this Personnel Committee is this day of the week, the next committee is the next. However, we decide to do that, but longer timeframe to get something done.
I mean, it, since this is just a discussion, I'm trying to respond to three or four different things here. Um, I don't know, the, one, one of the things that, um, and I did read it and I reviewed it and I, I, I thought there was some merit in it. I just thought the important piece was the difference between shall and advisory, right? So I think it depends also how you run your committee, if you're the chair, you might open it up for more feedback. I remember when we were over at uh, Bradford's Gym and Christine was doing, uh, bringing in a whole group of people there. And she asked folks, hey, what, what's your think, thinking about this and gave everybody what would be almost like a vote. Um, but it's still board members elected by the community to make decisions, and so I think we have to maintain that clear distinction. The other thing about the agenda review committees is I, I'm not, I, this is kind of nice, you know, I did both ways, you know, with more of the morning things. But I think there's a, a time factor which uh, concerns me a little bit. It feels sometimes like we have a lot of meetings and sometimes we have to think about how we manage those meetings. So it doesn't get to be overwhelming.
One, one thing that I just wanted to add, so when I was in the committee, using the committee structure when I was in Richmond. There would be uh, to the point about, I think it was in here, that the second Tuesday of the month is the um, uh, committee meeting time. One of my, um, one of the things, the way that I use the committees sometimes, and I did have a policy committee. The policy committee probably met seven or eight times uh, during the year, based on need. Facilities, maybe twice, um, but it was based on need and what the agenda was and what was, and doing some scheduling out. Um, as far as, and we do have a schedule, uh, Stacy created that, um. Here's a schedule of topics that come, things come up that have to be added to it, but we do have a schedule of topics. But it's just, I guess, that would be my one question, if there's not, I hate having a meeting to waste people's time. I hate having a meeting that is show and tell as opposed. Um, so I guess that would be one thing that I would ask the board to consider is the frequency. Of those, so any, just as a, I, I throw that out there.
And one thing that I would add, and this modifies language I, you know, I put in here, or I, by default, I said that they were gonna meet every other month. But I think maybe what we could do is that, we'd have to figure out, uh, figure out what the schedule would be. But like the city council, for example, I mean, their committees, you know, they've set their own, you know, pace by which, you know, the committees meet. So like, you know, say curriculum meets every other month, policy meets, you know, once a month. Facilities meets twice a year, you know, and we just, but we, maybe that's just something that we have to establish. Um, and maybe just change the language such that it doesn't really tie our hands in the policy itself, I think, you know?
So you're thinking that a set schedule to start and then the committee can have some self-determination, based on need? Also, I would say if there's something that's major, you'd want to have that committee, whatever it fell under, to be like top priority. Because you're gonna run into that occasionally, you know, we always did. If you have like something that's really top priority has to be for a committee before it goes to the board. Then that would maybe bump somebody's schedule if they didn't have anything, I think that flexibility would be important. For example, having the uh, controlled entrances and facilities. Might mean that facilities would have to meet more and we'd need to see John more and get updates and things, yes, okay.
I guess I had one more, one more thing to add, like at our university, we use ad hoc committees from time to time, those can be effective. Because you could do an ad hoc committee six months and you're done, and then you close it.
Yeah.
So if there's something that the superintendent says, hey, I would really like President, if you put together a committee for this, that's always a good option.
And that's mentioned in here, yes. So this is discussion only, so what would be the next steps?
Um, I could, it could come forward as a um, as a policy revision for discussion at an upcoming meeting. We, um.
We are currently putting together our committees and things, we're looking at what we're doing, so.
And I guess my, one of the things, um, some of that, we're a little behind on getting that ready, I don't think we will have it ready for September.
Right.
The committees, so I guess my suggestion would be to. Suspend, reschedule the September um, committee meeting, have a discussion about this policy. Um, August, maybe September, approve it and then look at a new um, way to move forward after that.
Consensus, good.
Okay, thank you. The next item um, is the verbal update, uh, Harbor Acad, Harborside Academy transition. Uh, from an instrumentality charter to a district school of choice, um, and the reason why this is on here. I want to be very, I want to preface all my remarks with this one very loud, clear, underlined, bold, highlighted. Harborside needs to continue as this, as a high school in Kenosha, and as a six-twelve in Kenosha Unified. Hundred percent, my support as superintendent that that occurs. I just wanted to get that out, um, this is, we're not talking about closing Harborside, we're not talking about um, drastic changes. The funding of our charter school for Harborside, that model is no longer working. Uh, for several reasons, one of, one of the reasons is that the way that we tie funding formula, the funding formula. To our charters and we've done it in the past, and Harborside's our only remaining charter, is through our per pupil allocation. Um, in the state budget, so the pre, this last budget that came through was with a zero-dollar per pupil increase for our charters. The money was given through our special education, money, special education, uh, from thirty percent. I'm getting, I'm, I think I should either lay down a bunt, steal or be quiet.
Well, there, there was the three-twenty-five per pupil increase.
Three-twenty-five, I'm sorry, yes, you're correct.
Eighty percent of that, three-twenty-five per pupil, but the state, instead of increasing that per pupil amount. Gave us the funding through that special ed reimbursement rate increase, which they don't get a portion of that. And Harborside, along with everybody else, is experiencing declining enrollment, so enrollment issues, especially at the high school level. That they're feeling that bubble, so the problem comes down to that charter agreement. Which is a contract, is now in violation because of the financial stability or the sustainability, I should say, of that model. The model just doesn't work anymore for that.
Well, um, and to that end, um, by, this is the same situation that DOL would have been in. And Brompton would have been in, had we not combined them and moved them to a charter, we're in, Harborside is in that situation now. So, one of the, something that we are, that I am recommending, is that we begin to explore converting. Um, Harborside to a district charter, uh, to a district program, choice school, I'm sorry, from a charter to a, a district school of choice. Um, and that involves engaging their, uh, our initial conversations with, um, and they're very preliminary. Uh, I think this is going to be a very um, cordial uh, situation. I don't, I see this as being very much like the DOL-Brompton conversations about converting the charter. Um, as opposed to some other less.
Shall not be.
Friendly ones, yes, that we had, um, but I see this one going, going that route. And I wanted to bring this forward to the board for your um, awareness. And so that we can move forward and begin conversations with their, with their board, um. I always talk about the smelly elephant in the room and surfacing it, I'm not calling Bill a smelly elephant. Uh, but certainly his involvement at Harborside as the founder, um. Is, you know, something that's on everyone's mind, um, so I would hope that Bill would have a, play a big role in that. Work to, to see that the program continues um as a district charter, so.
Okay, uh, Bill, just clarification. If a, um, if it's a program, then the school, if Harborside's a program. Then Harborside teachers could also utilize Luther teachers, or I mean, as students. That you can sort of use other teachers, but if it's a charter, you can't, is that part of the problem?
No, um, we, we have a hard time sharing teachers, um. Uh, we share teachers with, with other buildings. It's the scheduling difference, that, that, that's schedule was purposely built to um. Have one school come in, use the entrances come through, um, next school come in, use the entrances. Uh, passing time is at eight o'clock and then the next school passes at eight forty, so they're not all in the hallway together at the same time. That's what makes it difficult to share staff. Um, is it possible to share some staff? Possibly, um, it's, you know, we didn't close a high school. Um, and so there are a certain number of kids uh to fill in, so. Harborside was projected to run at five seventy or up to five seventy, they're at five fifty-two, five fifty-four, something like that. So they're, they're not that far off, but when you're talking about. Eight, nine thousand dollars per kid and your funding disappearing for, you know, losing three or four kids starts to be a, a, a big deal. And so how do we? Give teachers, cuz they're part of the district, they're, they're district employees just like everybody else, so it, and I, I wouldn't say that we're gonna be a program, they're gonna be a, just a choice. School. Like Lakeview K eight or like Ruth Harmon, with, that would have, you know, just remember that when. Um, we transitioned those charters to choice school, we basically took their charter and came up with a, a choice school. Description of how they're gonna be unique, and so there's no intention on our part for them to not be an expeditionary learning school, to not. Do some of the things we'll have to figure out, you know, there's a lot of things in that charter, but um, we would come forward to you. Um, with the Harborside people, I'm sure they're gonna be advocating for, to hold on to a much, as much of that uniqueness as they can. Um, but yeah, I think the goal is, as Dr. Weiss said, to have a mutual agreement, like, you know, we're not trying to. Say it's, it's a bad place, we need a funding formula that works, when we got together, Jeff said, you know, we, we gotta find a way to make this work. Um, and so that's what we gotta go about doing.
So the, for the parents and the students, what changes would they see with Harborside being choice instead of charter?
Well, that's, that's part of the work we have to do, but I would say that immediately, the thing I see is they don't exactly meet minutes. For the state, because charters don't have to, so we would have to meet minutes, um, but uh, it isn't, you know. I don't, I don't think that people at Ruth Harmon would say, or at Lakeview K eight say. Would say that their program significantly changed or that they're even aware that they're now a choice school instead of a charter, that's really about. How we fund things and then what, what Harborside will be concerned about when they come to speak about this. Will be how much of their uniqueness can they hold on to?
Questions for Bill? Or Dr. Weiss? Yeah, Carl?
Are the um, students funded like eighty, twenty, like?
Yeah, so with the charter agreement, the instrumentality charters that we had were responsible for all of their building costs. And all of their staff cost, so the funding mechanism, and this worked back in the day, but it's just, I'll be blunt about it. It's antiquated funding mechanism, so back when that was adopted, that eighty percent per pupil reflected. The dollar amount that independent charter schools would get directly from the state. Nowadays, we're seeing that independent dollar amount skyrocket, go up. And we're seeing our per pupil amount limited, not even keeping up with inflationary increase. So you have the perfect storm going over there, when we have, when we just talked about compensation, when we're increasing salaries. The charter school has to worry about every one of those salaries, they have to cover them. So when we're doing a three percent plus schedule movement on their teaching staff. So you can call that almost a four and a half percent average increase on their salaries. Plus health insurance cost increase, the charter budget has to account and absorb all of that. Whereas a choice school, we give them the FTE allocation and then the actual dollars and cents I'm managing. In, in the pooled fashion at the district level. So the schools don't worry about, except for their grant-funded people, they don't worry about what if Carl takes single or family insurance. They don't have to worry about that part. Charter school, you can budget for somebody having single insurance and they get married in the middle of the year, they go to family insurance. And you just inherited twenty thousand dollars more of expense that you weren't planning for. So it, it's, it's just a whole different model, so we feel like we can keep and preserve the program. Preserve what's, the good things that are happening at Harborside, but doesn't have to be an instrumentality charter with that separate agreement, separate funding model. We can do other things.
Does that uh give the district a little bit more financial flexibility?
A little bit, there could be, on staffing levels, so there'll be a little bit more control on staffing levels, so there will be some standardization. That could potentially happen there, but that's something we have to talk about and work out the scheduling and how we'll allocate the staff there.
Great, thanks.
Anything else? All right, that takes us to uh the prep time.
Yep, so I did receive um, a couple of um emails. Uh, regarding getting prep time discussion on the agenda that were sent to uh President Mader and myself. Um, so this is on for a discussion uh item and one of the things that um is going, some of the ideas in there. Are, do have financial, do have fiscal impacts. So we're going to have to, we're gonna have to do some work costing that out uh before bringing that to the board for a discussion, we're going to have. And some of, some of it we have already, um. Some of it, I have some potential ideas and thoughts around that I'm not making eye contact with Tark right now. Um, so that. To avoid making his head explode, um, and then some of them too, I want to check on. If we, some of the ideas that were shared with me, my concern is that it would put um. Some of our principals in a position where they have to make um choices whether to violate policy or to honor. Making sure that students have coverage, so. I'm gonna do some work on that and bring some ideas forward based on the ideas that were shared with me. And I'll work to have that ready by, I, I'm, I'm hoping I can do it by the August meeting, but I. Not sure I can, it's the beginning, if, if it's not the August meeting, I'll have it ready for the September agenda review or whatever we have. Um, it's the beginning of school, we've had, we've got quite a few other uh topics that the board is, that we're working on. So we'll get this done as soon as we can, and again, this is one of those things that I wanna underline, highlight and bold, just like with Harborside. Nobody around this table would say teachers don't need prep time, um, to get their work done and to do the best work for our students. It's costly to go from where we are right now to add staff in order to do that. It was something that we tied into the referendum in hopes that it would pass and that we'd be able to do it. But you're not getting an argument out of anyone around this table that this isn't something we need to do, um, so I just wanted to say that, the question is how? How do we do it? And how do we, how do we pay for it? So those are the two things that are in my head, uh, based on, you know, just for part of the discussion that I wanted to share.
So if it's not on the, so if it's not on the agenda as an action item for August. Would it be on the agenda as an update?
Yes, I'll do that, yes, I can do that.
Trying, trying to get everybody, cuz I have directives too, yes. All right, uh, that's pretty much. Pretty, pretty much it, except unless we have uh any views and comments, all right.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Chair votes aye, we are adjourned.